Guy in the sky. All right, it is 6:03 and it is September 18th, 2023. And I am going to be calling the Committee of the Whole for the Button Board of Education to order. The first place or the first thing is the review of this September 11th meeting minutes. Can I have a, uh, thank you, Liz? Can I have a second? I have Dean. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the meeting minutes of September 11th, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Right. I believe that motion is carried. All right. And so the next piece, moving right along, is on the review of the summer curriculum development. And I believe that would be Phil.
Yeah, up and obviously listen back for accurate mention also. I'm trying to find.
You know, it's in, if you find the template, it's right attached to the template. So if you find the September 18th. How? She's got it right attached to the summer for the first agenda item. Yep, there you go. I don't know if you can make it bigger.
So this document should look familiar to you. We did review it before the presentations last week. We went through it a little quickly as we worked our way towards our book study presentations. You know, this just represents the work that's been done, you know, really since the spring and through the summer. We just had a great meeting with the Curriculum Subcommittee to discuss. We had already talked with the Derek Henkel of the Naval Studies in spring. We had representatives from the high school to talk about the ASL 4 class and topics 20th century. We had those presented will, this, about those classes will come before the board for official adoption at a later point. Just, you know, recognizing the work in the topics in 20th century with written by Carly Rising, Todd Higgins, Nicole Howell, Carmita Hodge, and Laura Johnson. And Joan, I'll get you all this information so you don't have to worry about keeping up with names. And then the ASL 4 class was, you know, Christie Derscher and Rebecca Rubitzke Ankrum. Rebecca presented the ASL 4 this evening. And Todd and Laura Johnson were there for the topics in 20th century. So those are classes that if, again, they passed.
Passed us.
They passed the Curriculum Subcommittee and stuff will come before the board with the hopes of having those classes in our program of studies from February and to teach next fall.
And I just wanted, can I project?
Absolutely.
I really appreciate the teachers that can, the administration that has really focused on maintaining the timeline that the curriculum committee has put out and has really worked hard to make sure that they have these things in place. Not as a, you know, as a knee jerk reaction, but as something that's very timely and it's done with a lot of research and care. And the documentation in the research, the depth of these curricula that were presented to us tonight were really quite remarkable. And we are very confident that you will see it, you know, that it will be voted on. I'd like to see if we can get it voted on at, for the upcoming meeting.
Well, if it has to be in the program of study, that's February. So.
Program of studies, I think it's end of December.
They start putting it together. It gets out to the public.
January.
Okay, so, um, would it be ready to go to vote next month?
It's ready to go vote this one.
Next week.
They're, they're, they don't need any update.
What does that require? I mean, I can get the documents. Would the documents be attached to the full board?
So.
That's September 26th.
So that's Tuesday. So could we do, could we do October, the end of October?
Certainly.
Would that give, would that give enough time for it to be approved and then go into the program of study? Then you guys are not like running around.
That would be perfect. We appreciate that.
And just for my note, does that, do you require that the teachers come back and talk about it? Or is the Subcommittee not, what's been done? I can't remember.
We, we have done both. What is the will of the board?
The board's not good.
What?
The board's not good. The whole. Such a lovely.
I do.
Well, perhaps we send them a Zoom link because Todd is kind of leading the high school.
More than likely maybe.
Yeah.
You know, if we provide this anyway, so. It's a, my, my question is, what will be best in terms of lifting up that faculty? When people strong, they feel more empowered presenting something, doesn't have to be happening in the presentation. I think they should be.
Because all, these have come before the, the topic itself has come before the board. I remember that last year, why not? Yeah, it did come here. So this would be the finalized copy.
Yeah, because they asked to be able to do this, you know, this was a request.
This would be the opportunity to validate the work.
Yes, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you for funding.
That's perfect.
Okay. And then the rest of the document are, you know, we list the modifications. And one thing I'll speak to as well is, is, I mean, we were talking tonight at the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting is the aspect of the work that maybe has changed. I'm not sure how it was done in the past, but we're trying to really encourage the vertical articulation where we're getting teachers together. You know, in terms of the work that you see before you, 612, so which doesn't, which hadn't happened a lot, you know, from what I'm hearing. And it really allows them to review what's taught, avoid repetitious topics over the course of many years and to really strengthen the curriculum. So they've appreciated that time. We gave them some of that time in the beginning of this year as well. We hope to do that on the election day as well. Just to continue that work where 612 can get together as departments do the work. So they all commented on how that really helps them build a stronger curriculum.
And then also articulating K5 as well. And then having that then merge so that you can talk across from elementary to middle school is very important. So sometimes the task force and the Curriculum Instruction Council does that for you, Phil. Meeting with those groups, that's a good time to lay it out.
Um, that was, uh, I think Joan was saying that she was having a hard time hearing what you had to say. So when you speak, and I got, I got you Rita, um, but there was a, on the chat so that when you speak, if you could keep your mask on, but just move your speaker closer to you. I think that she was having a hard time articulating you. Um, Rita. Rita, you are muted, so we cannot hear you.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, my, I'll, I'll give them all at once. My first two questions are about the modifications to Algebra at the Middle School and also American History 8. And then in the elementary, the modifications to World Language. If somebody could explain all those to me.
And, and I'll say that the, what we hope to do is have teachers, you know, to come and really explain the detail of the work. I will, I will say that one thing that we noted during the last meeting is that you'll see a GMS course, American History 8, as well as a GMS course, Topics in 20th Century. That Topics in 20th Century should be crossed out. Uh, that I'll have Erica make the update. It was a typo because that's a, that's a high school class.
That, that's not what I asked, though. I just want an explanation. So you're saying that these modifications are already in place, but they haven't come before the board yet?
Well, modifications don't need to be approved by the board.
I know they don't have to be approved, but wouldn't it be nice if we were informed what the modifications were?
We are, we are gonna, yeah, we're, we're working on a schedule right now to get all these, all these in front of the, uh, at least the board of, you know, you, you tell me, is it the Curriculum Subcommittee? That's generally where we go with modifications, or would it be the full board?
Can I, I think I, I can explain the Honors Algebra 1 to you. When, um, we created the Algebra 1 course for middle school, the eighth grade, it was an honors level course. So it was differentiated from the regular. So there's been a lot of talk about offering ninth grade some honors courses, quite frankly, Rita. And I, I don't know if you knew this or not, but I think we had an honors level English in ninth grade, but we didn't have it in math. And I can be able to look at the Honors Algebra that we have in eighth grade. And we actually have four Honors Algebra ninth grade running this year, or three Honors Algebra ninth grade. So we did have a lot of students who signed up. And fortunately, we already had the Honors Algebra program in eighth grade and they just needed to tweak it a little bit. So it's really the same course, but now it's for eighth, for ninth grade as well. So that was kind of.
Do they, do they come down to the middle school or they have them at the high school?
No, they have the classes at the high school. There are plenty of kids in the ninth grade who still take algebra. We have about a third, though, of our eighth grade population who's been part of the Honors Algebra 1 program. So it's grown. So we're happy about that. World Language is really a similar situation where the World Language used to do the carousel in sixth and seventh grade. But this year, because we have fourth and fifth graders taking French for half a year and Spanish for half a year, we've just adapted that curriculum to make it for the elementary. So that when, after this year's, this next couple of years, fourth and fifth graders go to the middle school, they can get right into the first year program of either French or Spanish in sixth grade. So they'll have two and they're shortened periods. So they'll basically end up with a full year of these shortened periods in grade six and seven. And then they have a full year in eighth of a full block. So we're hoping they get through the first year, year and a half, two years. So through that novice approach, so by high school, they'll be really ready for intermediate and advanced work in world language. So that's the whole goal.
But the courses at the high school, you're still not offering Latin. So the choices are Spanish and French.
Right.
You're saying that by the end of the sophomore year, you could be finished with Spanish or French. And then what would the language be?
Well, in order to get a seal of by literacy, I don't think you'd be done with two languages unless I came in speaking Spanish.
No, just one language. I'm just talking about, let's say, somebody wanted to do five years of Spanish or five years of French, which we used to have. Um, I, I was just curious. I mean, when my children were at the high school, they did finish by their end of their sophomore year, Spanish. So they were able to take Latin for a couple of years, which was a tremendous help on their SATs. So I'm wondering, are we going to be offering another language at our high school besides French and Spanish? Especially if we're now offering it to fourth and fifth graders.
So we do have a third language and it's ASL and it is quite popular.
Well, I'm not talking about ASL. They, they can always do that also. But I meant a real, another language like, you know, German or.
So, so Rita, um, ASL is actually recognized as another.
I know that. I, I, I'm very well aware of that, Kim. But that's still not, if somebody wanted to take Mandarin or another language, German. I mean, we should be able to offer those to our students, especially if they're taking French and Spanish in fourth and fifth grade.
And I will tell you that we also, we hope to have that, uh, that problem where we, we will end up developing Spanish 5 and Spanish 6 and, you know, we don't need that right now because we haven't started at the age that we're starting now. But that's something that we're going to build on too, so they can continue to take those languages and hopefully for, for college credit.
We've actually talked at LEARN about a way that we might be able to host different languages, to hire someone in Mandarin Chinese. We did have that in Stanford when I was the Associate Superintendent, but it was very hard to keep those people employed. And it was very hard to keep a full, you know, plethora of caseload for them. But if we did it inter-district like we have at LEARN, there could be some other options for kids. And I'm with you that there could be other things that we can explore. Some of our Latin, we still have a Latin teacher, so some of our students have continued or they've done it remotely. But there are some other ways that we could provide without having to hire one of each of those teachers, you know, to offer one offs.
For Rita, and I think you're right.
I think, yeah, East Line has a part-time Mandarin teacher.
Yeah, if we, if we're able to build a love of world languages, starting in fourth grade, you're right. We, we'll probably have that desire to, to expand by the time they get to their 11th grade year. So that's something we'll keep an eye on.
And we, and Fitch always had five years of Spanish and French in previous years. They always had that fifth year advanced class.
Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
Jay?
Um, I know it wouldn't be practical to, uh, to actually bring all these modifications to the board, but is there like a high level document, even to award members that want to see, want to dig into?
They've adjusted the maps.
We have the curriculum maps that we can provide for you.
Okay.
Um, that could also, you know, if we look at them all at the same time, that could be pretty lengthy. But, you know, um, if you wanted some type of summary of the modifications, perhaps when they come to the Subcommittee, I can ask them to have that ready for the Subcommittee and then I can compile those for board as a way to have like a little.
Plus they're online. You can see them right on our website, the maps. And then if you wanted more detail, if you go in with your Broughton Public Schools address, and we can show you how that works and show you the site that we've created. I've shown it to you before, but just to remind you how to get there, there's everything on it, including assessments. So it's not meant for the general public because it has the lesson plans and everything.
Show that too because we have upgraded our website, so it's new. So it might be a little tricky to find your way around.
Yeah, that would, that would be.
We'll bring that back to you.
I think I'm, I'm trying to think about what is, makes the most sense because I don't want it to be double, double duty for the, so if, you know, so what do we want the Subcommittee of the Curriculum to do? And then, I mean, do they get the bulk of the work? And then do we then, as a board, do we get the balcony view about what each one of these modifications are? And if that is true, what does a balcony view look like? Because, I, I mean, I'm, you and I have had this conversation all since I've known you about we tend to keep conversations over and over again. And so how do we make them the most use of what's happening in your curriculum, um, your, your curriculum committee? And so that you, so I don't know what that looks like. And I, and I, I don't know if I have the answers, um, for that. But I'm, once again, I don't want it to be, it goes to Liz's group and then it comes to the Committee of the Whole. Um, and granted, it's all modifications, so we don't have to vote on it. But how do we, how do we make sure that the board gets their feet wet? And so if you have an idea, um, let me know.
Well, I was just wondering if someone's going to create documents for each of these highlighting the modifications, then those board members who want to dig deeper into that will have the option to do it, but it won't be required.
Sometimes it's.
Or, or people can attempt, or, or attend the curriculum meeting. And when you guys go over, because they're open, um, they could, they can hear about each one of the curriculums that get done.
I think that's a very good idea about taking the, the ones that are modified, highlighting online where the modifications are. You know, what was, or what was added. And that way we can independently look. We will take a look at those things next month. You know, have an overview of like doing all the social studies, all the science, all the math and start looking at the modifications are.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking even more, like, I think it'd be easier for the teachers to, to do the little narrative.
Okay.
Instead of going, and then that you wouldn't have to swipe through the document and looking for highlights and not really.
They usually put it on a Google Doc, so they're all working on it together. So I don't know that they keep track of it like we do with policy, green light, yellow light, red light, so.
Maybe what we can just do then is ask them to, to come speak. And that there's, you know, because, and maybe a generalization of what the modifications are.
And maybe that, that could become part of the notes.
Yep.
The minutes for those meetings and those could be shared.
Does that sound good?
Is this better? I'm wondering, I don't know if it's possible for teacher X who did the modifications on the Black Literature Collective, for example, to summarize the modifications in one or two paragraphs. Just keep it very brief if somebody really wants to go dig deeper. But I don't want to handle up the burden to the teachers.
Yeah.
Nor do I want to handle up the burden to the board members on the committee. But, you know, if they could summarize in two hundred words.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what he's talking about.
When they come to talk to us, I'll just ask them, hey, before you come to that meeting, just provide that summary for them. Then they'll come to speak to it and I'll share that summary with them. Like, we'll, we'll read that into the notes, so it becomes part of the minutes.
The secondary question is in terms of our workflow, if we have 20 people or 20 different presentations, that would pretty need to be the least of all meetings.
At least two, three, four meetings.
So, uh, I want to see everybody validated. Thank you. Uh, but I really think we have enough work to do without these in two months.
Well, and many of them come from state mandate, oh, I'm sorry. Well, they just come from state mandate. They come from, um, changes that the State Department of Education has made. Even some of the science is shifting to this thing called Gem Nets. And so it's a little different. It's still the next generation science standards. The standards are still the same, but the delivery is a little different. So it's more the lesson plans that come out of it and we tweak it in the maps.
And to Matthew's point, if, if they're minor modifications, then perhaps the narrative is all we need. You know, they don't have to come to you.
Yeah.
I don't want to, yeah, micromanage, just want to spare everybody from.
Yeah, because it's a lengthy list and we're lucky we had so many people.
I can't, I can't believe how much God. I mean, think about what they got done over the summer. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing. Dean?
So I'm probably not close enough to microphone.
But you've got that.
I've got that voice. So this is probably the only opportunity I have to say this. Rita brought up an interesting point. I never thought about it before. Uh, I took Spanish from seventh grade all the way to 12th grade when I took A B Spanish. That's altogether six years of Spanish, A, B, and then whatever you want to call it. I also managed to fit in three years of German. Uh, I'm in a distinct minority and I was an engineering major ultimately, but I liked languages. I never thought about this before. Well, Rita brought it up. The value in having two languages like that available to me to learn was not just for the languages themselves, but because Spanish and German are very different. They're not as radically different as, say, Spanish and Arabic, but they're very different. And what it does is the process of learning those two languages and at the same time, it expands the mind. Different perspectives, Spanish, German, and then English. I actually learned a lot about English in taking German, so it's a very valuable experience. I was only sorry I could only put three years, but that's all I had room for. So maybe that's something to consider. I don't know who would take a sub if we offered room for a second language. But I just can't, I can tell you that it was a positive thing for me.
Thank you, Dean. But, and so maybe that is something that we can ask Susan to go back to LEARN about and see if there's other districts who are also needing to look at other, another world language. And if maybe there's some way that they can house the teacher and kids can either remotely go to them or what, what have you. But, because I don't know each individual district and, um, have all those different languages now. I, and I don't know that. All right.
Would DOD need the financial source of funding for?
I'm not sure. I mean, if we wrote it in a grant for the DODEA and did another world language grant, they could possibly be. But I think because it, especially getting started with the language, you might not need a full-time teacher. But the teachers are very hard to come by. So if, and it used to be when, when we went through COVID, the teachers learned to work with their group in front of them and the ones on Zoom. It was not easy. Legislation put an end to that. But now legislation has gotten loose to where they're allowing it now under certain circumstances. So that's the, why we started entertaining. It could be someone teaching a language at East Line, but has Zoom links for other kids that could then zoom in.
I guess that's what I'm talking about. Is, is there a way of getting creative?
To share staff and that might not cost us, you know, even some of the kids who've done the Latin, you know, it's, um, you know, we've made sure they, they were able to do it, but it was more of an online kind of resource.
The grant application not only provided funds for our students that were built in with Learn or somebody else to provide electronic means to other schools, I think that could be very true.
But I'll talk, start with the conversation form. But I, I agree. Like, this is pretty darn incredible. That much work got done over the summer with curriculum. Like, it seems like this list gets larger and more numerous every year. And it speaks to, speaks to the staff that want to continue their craft. I just, I think that that's just pretty amazing. Any other questions about summer curriculum? And Rita, thank you. You sparked a really good conversation, so I appreciate that. If I'm hearing none, let's go. Um, let's go to CIP proposals. Um, that's you. I was about ready to skip you and I'm like, no.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send Dr. Piazza, who's wearing three hats at once, home. So he can get home before I get home. And then he's gonna, he's gonna be starting the day at, at six something AM to run that high school. And he's been doing a wonderful job. They love him. They want to keep him there, but I won't let them. They want someone just like Dr. Piazza. We're gonna find somebody, but he's just been marvelous at handling things that come up and, you know.
Thank you, Phil. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Luke.
And I don't know, I didn't introduce Dave Flyk, who is our new business manager, who's sitting right beside Sam. He can wave at them so that they can see. Rita's one of our board members who's been probably the.
How many years?
Most years on the board. Oh, you're muted.
Twenty and my final year. So my turn ends December 1st. Nice to meet you.
We have to have a celebration. And Dr. Oregon is on there as well. I'm trying to see. That's it. Okay, great.
Yeah, come on.
Didn't send me home.
You didn't send you home yet.
Not yet.
Oh, you're a long haul. Your season is only beginning.
I've been warned.
Yeah, that's right. You'll, you'll get to know us really well. All right, so our next on the list is our CIP proposals. First of all, this is what happens when actually Kim follows our tracking sheet and we actually follow the rules. And the rules are, is that we need to make sure that the CIPs go in because is it next week or have you already had to put them in?
I haven't been told yet. I haven't gotten a notice yet.
He doesn't usually get noticed and then all of a sudden he gets noticed.
Again, they usually tell me that we need to send those in next week or something like that.
Right. So I had a big day.
It's usually earlier than.
And these have been, and these have been worked through by the financing facilities as well. Okay. All right, so what do we got?
Right, so Attachment 3 starts with the overview of all the projects that we put in last year that we will actually be putting back in again this year. So Fitch High School Athletic Facilities, which is the football field, re-crowning of the football field. B, Fitch High School Field House, that's the 15 million.
Which is really something that needs to go to bonding, but we feel like it needs to be right in the, you know, they need to continue to hear that we need help, especially with the vintage wing and fields of Fitch. And I think Mark Romano has actually been part of the committee and has gotten a little frustrated because it hasn't moved at all.
Can, can you do me a favor, or the board a favor? Could we get a sense of how many years we have placed the crowning of the football field? Like, I don't need to know exact, like, 2014.
Nine years and it's been at least seven of those nine years, so at least seven.
Yep, that's what I would say.
And then Northeast Academy air quality, that's to replace, uh, air handling units on the roof. However, as we've stated previously, we're handling the, uh, moisture content in the building through active dehumidification, which is essentially running the heat at the same time you're running the AC to dry it out. So that has been working. And you know that this past summer, we did some drainage work around the building as well. So, um, we, we're gonna keep an eye on that, monitor that. And we could still do two more sections of drainage if we find that it's necessary. So we'll continue to monitor Northeast Academy. We will just push this out another year, the replacement of the units.
And the twin school CK, you're also trying to stay on top of with the same process.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah. And, and so, uh, our, our maintenance staff really do a terrific job of keeping these units. And so our our maintenance staff really do a terrific job of keeping these units in excellent shape. So the lifespan for some of that equipment, as I'm told, is less than twenty years. And of course, we're at the sixteen-year mark now already on it. So but I I think with the maintenance program that we have, I think we can extend that a bit anyways. So we're just gonna push that two fifty out another year. Go to Fitch High School and Barnum Schools HVAC upgrades. You see, there is no number there. However, I do have a number for that, and we'll be putting this in. I gotta figure out how to break it down the way that the town wants it in the C I P. But the Fitch High School, which would take care of HVAC in the vintage part of the high school. I took the number that we got. We we came up with a number last year with the service that did an estimate for us and took a look at the service. They came up with four million eight hundred twelve thousand dollars. I added five percent for inflation. I know that type. It may not be enough, but I wanted I wanted to at least add something in there. If you think I should add more than that when I when I put it before the town, we can do that. I can I can talk to some more people about that before we do it. But right now, I'm gonna. My plan is to submit Fitch High School HVAC improvements for five million fifty-three thousand dollars. And Charles Barnum School, again, I added five percent again to last year's cost for two million three hundred eight thousand dollars. Those will go in in that T V D slot.
Now, the two point three, was that with the inflation?
Yeah, that's with the five percent.
And we did notice with the hot, hot, muggy air, we did have classes rearranged, so they weren't in the vintage wing. And I think even a couple custodians were complaining about the heat when it was so muggy. So it's still an area that we have to pay attention to. We have units in C B, so they are cool enough, but they probably are old units too. So just thinking of the future.
We actually got an OSHA complaint on the HVAC for air conditioning at the high school from the night custodial staff. I don't know who the individual was. I don't really care. But we we've handled that by keeping the A C running, well, in that very hot weather, keeping it running for a longer period of time. Apparently, it was going off at four o'clock in the afternoon. We ran it up until the time that they were leaving and then turned it up a little bit so that ran all night long so that it wasn't quite so warm in the morning. Because, you know, those bricks and blocks still radiate heat back into the building. So we wanted to make it more tolerable for those coming in in the morning.
Sam, Rita, do you have a question about this specifically?
Yes, I do. Sam, I I read recently that the state of Connecticut released more funding for schools for HVAC. Have you are you familiar with that? And have you applied to the state for additional funding?
Anything that they've released presently, we did not qualify for. We did not get those grants. However, we are working with Shannon to resubmit to this latest level that's been put out in the last couple of weeks. So we will be working with Shannon on putting in another grant application.
I don't think it's four point eight million, though.
No, it wasn't. Every little bit of help.
Every little bit of help, that's right.
And then we have the Fitch High School Culinary Arts for six hundred thousand, which we will submit. We didn't get it last year. And of course, the Fitch High School bleachers for one million seven hundred thousand dollars. So some of those numbers will have to be adjusted at some point for inflation. There's no question about that. But those are the items that we will continue to put forward to the town. Unless there's something else, somebody else has them on.
I'm I'm gonna recognize Jay and Liz.
I know we've talked about a lot of these things many, many times over the years. My recollection is since twenty fifteen.
That's my recollection.
One thing I was curious about is Northeast Academy. What are we doing? Are we measuring, you know, what it was a few years ago? Where we are now to determine whether additional drainage would be necessary? I mean, do we have devices to measure humidity?
Yes, we do. We keep in track of that. And we call up the log that we saw, check the log, see what humidity is.
So that will guide you as to whether we have to do that additional drainage.
Yeah.
And of course, the replacement of also change it just because the system that was currently designed didn't have the same level of humidity control.
That's right. Yeah, nowhere nowhere units would have have the ability to take the humidity out of the air in those units.
So speaking of HVAC, I mean, you talked about Northeast Academy being at sixteen. So Barnum was built in nineteen sixty-five. So what is the age of air systems?
They have, well, the systems that they have in that building are all either mini splits or window units.
Yeah. We have that as this other these other ad hoc systems. And do you have any idea?
Well, I know we just replaced one that was making a lot of noise.
I don't think they go back to sixty-five, though.
Yeah, those units, well, most of those units have been here as long as I have been. We've replaced a few since I've been here as they as they break down. Again, the teachers keep us up to date on when those units aren't using efficiently any longer.
So is the proposal to retrofit to
Yeah, we'd be looking at a system that would be on the roof. And of course, we're working with the architect right now to design the new roof at Charles Barnum, along with possibility of solar on it as well. So we're hoping, while we're trying to make this all come to fruition at the same time, so that we can do those units, the roof, and sort of all in one shot.
We had heard some community members request A B Ds. We didn't have funds at the end of last year to buy a couple more. But I think Sam has done a nice job estimating the number that we would need to have one on every floor in every school, you know, in having him kind of in the front half of the building and the back half. So I don't know if that would be a C I P, if we added it all up, if that would be.
Not a C I P because it's something that could be picked up and taken away. It has to be installed.
I did get bait detectors detectors through gas that had a grant. So we're putting those in the list.
Are we but are we pursuing? I know that's exactly on the topic, but I'm pursuing other ways of finding A B Ds.
You have to find either a grant or put it in operations, I think, if they can't be C I P.
But if you if you install them in the building, cabinets, you can't say attached to the real estate. You can't make them.
Go from your door and take it out as you walk off.
So you can't make the argument.
The cabinet is installed.
I can ask Shannon to help him look for something, maybe in the health department.
Liz? You know, I understand that this has been on on our radar, the athletic facilities, the field field house. I'm speaking and the bleachers, those three things primarily. Are we in danger of becoming out of compliance with law? Which means for the A D A, which means we could possibly lose those facilities because or the use of those facilities because you're out of compliance with law for A D A or any type of safety situation? Because the fields need work. That field house does not have stuff for females, as we know. We know the problems. I'm afraid to go in those bleachers. I've seen kids fall through those bleachers. Had one do that one for my own. You know, those are the types of things I'm concerned about. And I mean, are we at are we at a tipping point now? Have they gotten that bad that we're at a tipping point?
I don't have any answer for that. However, it does bring to mind, we do have a coach for the football team that is in a wheelchair. And we have on order now an elevator, essentially a platform elevator that will be installed that we will be installing on the outside of the building to take up to the second level. And we're gonna remove a window unit there and put a door. So we already got the door on here ready to go. We just need to put that in. And then once the elevator arrives, then we'll install that and attach it to the roof. It would be something that we could then, should the town decide that we need to build a new field house, renovate this one or whatever it was, the final decision. That unit could actually be taken off of the building and used elsewhere if needed. So it wouldn't be wasted on.
I really am concerned about potential, you know, let's face it. Yep, lawsuits.
Two years ago, we had a female football player. I don't know if I do right now, but again, that happens again. Putting our best foot forward.
I just want to make sure it's still out in the.
I think that was the thinking of why we were putting it in. We know that it's too much money for a C I P. But the community needs to know this is still a major concern. Rita? Oh, I'm gonna do Rita and then Matthew.
I was just curious, Sam, whether or not the Fitch football team played on the grassy field for their first game as opposed to their own field? You know, what was the reason for that?
I I don't know what the reason was, but I suspect that it was Grosse Tech's home home game, I guess.
Yeah, that's what was said.
It was.
People at the game, but I don't know how to I I didn't I didn't make it to the game. But two thousand people were there apparently.
Right. But I thought it was called Thames, the team they played. I didn't think the team was called Gasso. It was Thames.
Yeah, it's 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 two or three different schools.
It's a co-op.
It's it's a co-op. Yeah, there's three schools involved.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Matthew?
Well, I'm having a very hard time swallowing fifteen and a half million dollars. My understanding, my understanding is wrong, jump right on these things. My understanding is that we absorb the cost for an architect to come. It's wonderful. Do we need a Cadillac? Can we afford a Chevy? We need to respect equity, gender? Nope, no question. The prospect of a single female football player every six years, something we need to spend fifteen and a half million dollars.
It isn't just a single girl playing football. There are other sports that involve too, which they don't have, develop and use that field house right now, which they have a right to.
Have we explored scheduling? I know we need to do something about the building. It's not it's not the need that we have. But have we explored the possibility of scheduling so that we can have a smaller facility? And that when there are girls' games, facilities available to them, there are men's games, the facilities available to them. I'm not trying to sell something to you. I'm just saying, can we be creative in our thinking? So that we can hear the spec, because I think nothing would be more embarrassing if it was worded and put up something to bond anyone.
So we wouldn't be putting it up for bound from bonding. So this would be this would come through the town. And so so let's walk through the process, right? So there is a field committee that Jay and Sam, you're not on?
Mark Romano.
Mark Romano. So Jay represents the board, and we have Mark Romano, who is the athletic director. And the field committee, I believe, at the present moment, is looking for requests for proposals on the community center. So this field issue, if I can be if I can be understood about what's happening right now, the field issue is actually on the back burner. That right now, they're going for the request for proposals for the community center and like field-ish stuff that's happening in that. Is is that your understanding?
Yeah, I think you're also talking to Senator Park.
What about the chronic claims? They've moved from Fitch High School to chronic claims and now they're.
Town council, I believe, approved lighting. Chronic claims. There's a there's a lot of difference.
But so if we can remember, was it last year or was it the year before we actually asked the the chairs of the field committee to kind of come in? And I left the understanding that the fields and the field house was an important thing, but it was the second stage. I don't feel like that is that way anymore. And so I think, Matthew, all that we're doing here is saying this is the field house and the and the bleachers and and the fields are something that has been neglected for a really long time. And it's not necessarily because the board hasn't brought at least the fields, because there's a town councillor that will say that, that we have been doing that for several years, bringing the the field as a as a thing. But just like the new school buildings, I think that there would have to be a field committee put together to move forward on getting this referendum. But it sounds to me that the first referendum that's gonna go through is probably gonna be this community center. Is that do you think that that's a fair assessment? That's my that's my guess.
They originally looked at everything.
Yeah.
I I can't say exactly what, because also keep in mind, some of the pushback we're having on the field is that there is a proposal out there to flip the which would affect the placement of the field house. Obviously, you know, there's there's no one's spending any money repertory field that we're gonna flip. And then, of course, that would require the energy. So like I said, there's a lot of moving parts, and it's all gonna cost a lot.
Right, and the field itself would be multi-million dollars if we did a turf field. And I've heard that projects that include building parts, like the vintage wing of Fitch, if it was tied in with the field project, it would go to bond. That would have to be something to go to bond. And I think on our liaison committee, the town council, the city council, and the R T M, we asked for our representatives and senators to come to talk about some unfunded mandates and to talk about, you know, things like the needs of the district into the future. The older Charles Barnum Building, the vintage wing, and some space issues that brought me.
Sorry, the bond committees that we're discussing, is a town bond or is it the state bond?
So there is no committee set for a bond. It just said that anything, I think, what I was meaning by that was anything that's above, what's the dollar amount? I can't anything above X amount of dollars for the in the town of Frotten. It has to go to it has to go to referendum where the voters have to do it. And so that's what I mean by in terms of, because it wouldn't be something that we could just throw in for a capital improvement. We would have to actually have a referendum, and then we would have to get state bond. We would have to get money bonded from us to the state. Does that answer the question?
All right. So then with is there a special bond committee that specifically addresses or does it have to go to the state bond?
We decide what we want to spend money on. I don't remember what the limit is, to be honest, what the threshold is. I do remember a number of years ago, we had a proposed project that was bonded to redo the animal control facility. And that was one point two, one point five million dollars. If that was to be bonded, the bleachers alone would be bonded. So but I so that's I think that's that's the ballpark. I can't remember what the figure is, but at least a million dollars or more would have to be bonded. And it could be schools. It could be, you know, paving. It could be animal control facilities.
And it could be schools, it could be, you know, paving, it could be animal control facilities. Whatever we want to do, if that's beyond our capacity, the cash we have has to go out to bond it. Uh, I suspect if we had a ton of money in the bank, 300 million dollars, we would never have to go out to bond it, just pay out of pocket. But these things are beyond us and anyone here. So. I, I didn't mean to hijack this. I want to be, I want to talk next, though.
Okay. Yes, please.
Can I connect with you? Okay. I'm on here. Um, I understand the value of keeping things on the CIP list, even though they're more of a dream item and a wish list. And something we think the council's actually going to improve, uh, anytime soon. My concern about the, the one item, the field house item, 15 million dollars. Unlike the bleachers, which is 1.7, think about the number, think about the items you see on a typical CIP. The range of numbers, the 15 million dollar number is a standout. So people will see that first, they'll react to the number. And if you don't have a damn good explanation for the width, in other words, what's the sale job going to be? We run the risk, I think, of looking. Responsible is not quite the word. But we can say, hey, we're just keeping it as a placeholder. People say, are you kidding me? 15 million dollars? What's this about? And we better have the story all lined up.
Right. Which I think is to Matthew's point. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Otherwise, we're wasting our political capital, if you will. We want to look like we're the good guys.
Right.
Not profit good.
That makes a lot of, that actually makes, I was actually, I've been listening to what you had to say. And Dean, thank you for continuing the art, articulation and, and so maybe, maybe we need to kind of think about, is there, is there, is there a way that we can say that the board still wants us to be, to hold the, the athletic fields, the, is it the back? I think I heard someone called the back end of Fitch, um, the field house, the bleachers and the fields. And, and say that those, that we know that that is part of a, possibly of a larger plan. With the vintage wing.
Could you, could you do it in this fashion? This would be the CIP request with the items that you think are selected. And then to aggregate, to have that an appendix for a lower, an A and a B. This is our CIP, but we, we need to point out that while this is our CIP, which we're asking for funding this year. These are stuff that's more than blue sky. This is stuff that's really coming up sooner or later. We just want you to be mindful.
So we have.
And we've been doing that for nine years, seven years.
We have our meeting with John Burke, my team and his team in person next week, next Monday. And we can certainly bring this to his attention and say, how should we deal with this? You know? Um, we do have concerns about the vintage wing, as hot as it gets. There's a lot of things that need fixing, including the subject that we've dealt with. Um, so how long are, you know, are we going to find big projects like that every year going forward? Um, but if we can somehow bring that along with the fields, um, you know, what, what would be their suggestions?
Yeah. How do we keep it, how do we keep it, how do we keep it up on the burner?
Right.
But also keep our political clout. That, that is actually a really good point. Last year, it, I wondered, because I thought that the field has, I felt that the fields committee was doing something. So I kind of wanted to help them shove that along. But Jay?
So this, this proposal goes to the town committee. This is, we, we, we're, this isn't going directly to the town council. So we're not sort of burning any political capital.
Goes to planning.
Goes to planning. And so the way I see it is these are our capital needs.
Then it goes to town, town manager after that. So.
Right.
It, it usually is gone by the time it gets to town council.
Right. Exactly.
But I think if we bring it to the town manager's attention next week.
Yeah. So my, my point is that these are the true capital needs. Without regard to whether they're going to be paid through current funds or bonding, you know, these are our capital needs. I just don't want someone saying, oh, well, why didn't you mention this? We know that planning is not going to improve this. Because they can't, it's going to have to go to, to referendum. But again, it's, and we're not going to go to the town council and, and fight for it because we know, again, it's part of that larger fields committee. But we are just keeping it out there. These are our needs. The numbers may change and the funding sources may change, but these are our capital needs.
So it, it, it may be that on page two, for instance, we have a, a school needs summary in which we, uh, highlight the needs of Charles Barnum School, but because it's the oldest school, maybe that's where we put a high school, uh, note there and maybe with some help from somebody from this board, maybe we can put a narrative together there regarding the high school projects, including the field house, the field, uh, bleachers, if you think that those shouldn't be in the CIP, CIP request. So whatever we don't put in the request, we can put in a note here on this, uh, page two. So that again, it's before the board and it goes before the town council. Somebody reads it and stays in front of them, if that's our intent.
Oh, thank you.
Again, I'm just still looking for clarification of the bond process that we utilize to get funds for projects or needs within, you know, the school district. Who supplies the, where do we get the bond funds? Like, is it through the state bond committee? State bonds? No. So this is just local town government. We, we would vote voters from vote, yes, go and get bonds and that's all there is to the process for that. But it's money the town borrows to the angle that we put up in one of these. That's how that's done. The state bond commission approves state obligation. So if we were to basically build a new school or renovate a school, the state says, we're going to go in 30% with, or 45% with you. The state is now giving us, they get it from us. Are, we do our own bond. Okay. So we can't go to the state bond committee?
Well, unless we can get matching funds for the state. The state says, we'll go half these weeks on the field house. So that would be great.
Well, when the 2020 project came along, that was a bond for 184 million dollars, largest referendum in the state. When we got all of our matching and came in under budget on time, it actually cost the taxpayers more like 79 million dollars. And we didn't need all of that bonding of 184 because the, the government, the state came in and fulfilled their obligation. And then we also came in under budget, so we didn't need all of those funds. So it was really a very good job to get three schools for 70 something million dollars.
But it wasn't a revelation because when the project was sold, oh, it was sold as we would have to come up with X, the state's going to come up with Y. Back on more taxes was graphed out, the whole 180. State never came through. We just, there's no way it could be a revolution of some sort. So we only expected to spend whatever that was, 70 million or something. Nevertheless, there was a whole curve. As soon as your taxes go up, this much, this much, this much, it will peak around here, 20 whatever, and then start to slide down. And then that's how that's done. So it was sold beginning as we are going to pay that 75 million, whatever it was, not the whole 180.
But they, the referendum was for that. 184.
We had to, the referendum had to say, we're going for the 180.
Right.
With the understanding that we are not borrowing from the state.
But they do kind of work the same. Trying to explain.
It was challenging.
Yeah.
Past four years, they've cast some committees.
It's not, it's not just a matter of it's going to be the packaging, the narrative, whether it's something as simple as adding something in a different color. It's a matter of packaging.
So are people, um, opposed to Susan and Sam getting some feedback about how the manager would like, if they, if Susan and Sam can represent us in terms of the facilities? Um, and, and to see what the recommendation that he has, understa- um, understanding that we, we, we were doing a tightrope that we want, we want people to know that these are our capital needs and wants, but we all also understand 15 billion is not going to happen in a CIP. We're not being silly about that. But we just are trying to make sure that people don't forget about that that is something that's going to be important. And to see if then, if Susan, if you could, when you're doing the meeting this week, next week?
Yeah.
So maybe in that following, we'll have some more information.
So maybe John can guide you as to how he presents his high capital needs in this whole process without like getting lost versus the ones that can true CIP funds now. Because obviously this is the first time the town has spent a lot of money.
That's right.
So there must be ways that it can be presented. So.
I would say the bleachers are my more of a concern safety wise for me.
Maybe we know that the field house is not going to be approved by planning and sent to the town council.
Right.
Again, it's like a placeholder. But if he thinks there's a better way to present that, he's got a lot more experience with that.
So there's going to be some shining plums in the CIP, the overall project. We watch ours, but honestly, as senior, I have no idea what the town has. But maybe they have large ones. John could look at this and say, you know, I'm going to give you a hundred percent, blah, blah, blah. But I can't put this and one of my things on. I also road bond or something. You're going to have to wait. I can't sell, I can sell one public against up two.
And frankly, the whole field committee process is unlikely to, or unlikely to see a lot.
When we discussed this last year, I went to the field and went under the bleachers. And unless my memory is completely gone, I think I chatted with you afterwards and about whether there was a possibility of having interim fix to protect the safety of the bleachers. It seemed to me as a layperson with no qualifications whatsoever that one could have fixed boards, whether it be openings, whether there were places where there were already pre-drilled holes into the metal framework, that it might be the bolted in. It would be pretty and just be a band-aid, but it might be, might is the opposite word. It might be an interim solution. Is that something you could look at again? If this is going to take two, three, four more years, is this something you should be looking into?
That I'd have to, I'd have to bring an engineer in to look at those and make sure that that would be appropriate.
Would you take a look at it first? Because if you think it's not.
Oh, no, I, I. It sounds like, I mean, blocking it off makes sense. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But when you're adding something to a bleacher structurally, I think we've got to have somebody stand there during it.
I would also want to look at our insurance policy because then we're noting something. I mean, like that.
We're liable for everything we do anyways. We don't want to do anything without.
Now you're adding additional weight to a structure you designed.
Right.
I mean, yeah, you can't just sort of add things on. You don't know what foundations are like. You don't know what structures are like. And just slap dashing things on there. Okay.
Yeah, we could have got all kinds of things there, so.
And the lower going to cost you 1.7 would be.
Nine years down the road. All right. Any further, Sam?
So, um.
No.
Are you, before we leave this room, are you going to give me direction on which ones we're going to continue to include in this?
I think the board is telling you.
You want to take, do we want to take those three items out for sure of the CIP?
I think we're going to talk to John Burke. I like.
Football field, the field house and the bleachers. And do we want to keep the H back in for the, uh, Barnum and Fitch High School?
I, let's discuss it with John. And then I think some of the Fitch things that are way over could go in like you suggested under the, um, capital improvement project details. I, I think that for, in my mind, I think the only thing that could go into a narrative would be the field house because the bleachers and I mean, I think that we need to speak to the bleachers and to the, and, and to the, um, what, what is it called? The field, like the actual field. That's the word. Um, that feels like that needs to stay in, but maybe the field house is part of the narrative. I don't know. Does that sound acceptable to people? I want you guys to know in board notes how that all worked out.
Yeah. I'd like it all to stay, but that's just my feeling.
So, so do you feel.
Including the field house.
I, thank you, Rita. Um, I think that, um, I think what, I don't know if you heard what, what was. Was that I think we're going to wait to see what John has to say. Um, and we can either follow his recommendation or not. So this was a good conversation. Thank you, guys, that we could spend that, that much time on something like that. I appreciate it. Any further questions on the CIP? If not, let's go to the review of the budget timeline. But if we could have a better introduction to your newest staff member, that would be fabulous. And maybe we could kind of go around, um, and introduce ourselves as well. I think that that would be nice. You're in an interesting time period to join because, um, there's like every two years, the board, there, there can be a big change in terms of, um, who's in the board. And so there's actually many people who are around this table that will no longer be serving on the board. So you don't have to necessarily memorize all of our names. Some of them you do, um, but not all of them. But please feel free to introduce yourself. That would be great.
Yeah. So, uh, my name's Dave Clapp. I've been here now, I guess, going on five days or six days. So I feel like a veteran already. Um, you know, in terms of background, just real quickly, you know, I, most recently, I was in Hartford as their CFO. Um, in the education, in the education space, it's a public school CFO. Uh, prior to that, I was in sort of the corporate space. I was with Travelers for about 10 years, Cigna for six years. Uh, you know, some of the locals, United Health Group. Um, but, you know, grew up in three different financial leadership programs, you know, starting with GE, Fireman's Fund, Cigna. And then, uh, you know, got my teeth in this sort of the corporate space immediately after that. So, um, yeah, you know, I, I sort of did a number of years in corporate and wanted to make the change. My, my entire family's been in education. My father graduated from education, an education job in New York. My uncle, the same thing in Florida. So I've always had a desire to get in and, you know, spend some time at Hartford and wanted to, you know, find a space that was a little more intimate and just love the people as I went through the process.
Has a lot of experience with grants because Hartford gets a lot of grants. 350, what's that?
130.
Oh, 130. So how many, how many years at Hartford?
I was there between 2018 and 21.
It was COVID years. So fun years.
Yeah.
So I'm Kim. So I'm currently the chair of the Board of Education. I am one of those members. She will not be seeking reelection. So, um, but I, um, I do not have the longevity that our friend Rita has, um, in that she will, um, be 20. I will have served 12 years. You know, Susan?
Yep. I'm Andrea Ackerman. I'm the vice chair of the board and I do have more longevity than Rita coming out on the board. And cannot forget me at least for.
I'm Liz Porter. I'm, right now, this is my last term, my first term and my last term. Um, it's, I'm retired Brock, I'm a teacher. So I'm really retired.
I'm Matt Shulman. Background in education, but not team 12. This is my, I was appointed, no, I was elected for, since it completed four-year term, I've been in the board two years.
Jay, well, I've been on the board since, uh, 2015. I'm also. Dionne Tepas.
He was appointed for a year or two before you.
I was appointed, but then I had a lot of jam and.
So you're.
I was appointed, but then I had the rock again and I had to approach myself. Statue of the Pride. I was previously, I'd served on the town council, like the golf development, six and a half years. Um, yeah, I've been a candidate many times for things, uh, not this time. Well, pretty stable. No problem.
Is it my turn?
Not quite yet. We're, we're still doing William.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear him that well.
Now, now it's yours, Rita.
Oh, okay. Um, Rita Volkman, I, um, have been in education in New London for many years and joined the Groton Board. And have really, really hoped that the people that are running for reelection get elected. And I will be advocating for them. Um, and I think you're, you made a wise choice choosing Groton. Good luck.
So what we have in front of us is, um, our budget calendar. Um, and we just, once again, I think that Susan and I just felt, um, to, first of all, it was on the template. It falls with the template. Um, but that also just to gives us a sense about where, where we are at. Um, and so, uh, the December 5th, there will be a review, um, in the, the Board of Finance and Facilities Committee. And then Tuesday, January 2nd, we'll start the board, the board's work, um, towards the superintendent's budget um, to have here. Um, I, I also think it makes sense that, um, that we should probably, and I don't know if we would want it to funnel to Jay, that if we've got some concerns about the budget or having some explanation, maybe it should go to your committee. Does that make sense to kind of take a look at? Once again, I'm really trying to, to make sense around, um, I think policy committee just kind of makes sense because it's policy, um, but making sure the curriculum gets this, gets the first round. And then for financing facilities, you get your round. So if there's concerns about, um, what's happening with the budget or spending or what have you, um, to make sure that it gets, it gets thrown into Jay's committee for agenda items so that you can take a look at it. So our work really, as a staff, begins like now, as we're, you know, working closely with Dave, you know, kind of getting him up to speed and showcasing some of the things that we are kind of forecasting even, you know, for next year. So administrators will be, um, meeting with Dave soon. I think he's going to be going out to the schools. You're actually coming to Fitch tomorrow to meet all the principals. And they have to start thinking about their budgets, um, ahead of time. And so that's one of the first things that we look at. We look at that and the staffing needs and, um, you know, they, things that are coming off grants, things that are sustained in grants because we've gotten future, our bester grants to keep us going for several things. So, um, that work is all happening kind of as we speak in, in October, so that we'll be ready.
Kim, is there, um, something we can add to a future COW right now? Or it's not on the agenda? It just says adjournment.
Yeah, um. Yeah, if you could just send me an email, then I would make sure that I get onto this.
I will.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions around the calendar? And Lori was very helpful in this, that she looked at dates from last year and just found the closest date. So that was ready to go. Yeah, yeah, follows the same process. And then, yeah, absolutely, good luck and, and welcome. And I, um, I will echo what Rita said is that, uh, I'm, uh, you're, you're going to be glad that you chose Groton. Um, I think that this is a dedicated, um, district and it's a good community. So, um, Andrea?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, meeting is adjourned.